I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners to order. It is June 16th, 2021, and I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present via Zoom. And we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will begin with our department updates. First up is Ms. Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today? It looks like it's going to be another beautiful day, so thank you for having me here. I don't have a lot of new things to share, but just a couple of updates. This week Monroe County does remain in blue. Our numbers are pretty stable. Expect us to stay in that 28 per 100,000 range in terms of cases. Our positivity rate is below 3%. It kind of vacillates a little bit in that two-point, you know, range. So we're kind of stable at the moment. We are seeing households, family units with infections. So when I kind of look at what's going on, that is what we're seeing. And we're seeing much younger people being diagnosed. So what I would say is that if you are parents, you have children in your household, you care for children who are unable to be vaccinated, they're under 12, so they're not eligible. It is really important for you to be vaccinated so that you don't put them at risk of infection. If you look at the state map, you will see and the breakdowns that we have, that at one point, we really had almost no cases in our very young people and people under a year, people under 12. We, it was rare that we saw those infections. And those numbers are not high right now, but they are certainly increasing. So that's one reason that I wanted to just make that point. Yes, we are seeing big drops in numbers of people who are older because those populations have been more fully vaccinated. But we need to remember that there are members of our population who are still vulnerable, and we want to protect them by being vaccinated ourselves. We do continue our homebound program. So any individual, especially older individuals, but anybody who may be homebound, they cannot get to a vaccination site. If they call 211, they can assist them with the homebound program. Or I'm sorry, if they call Area 10 on aging, they can help them with that. But if someone needs a ride to a clinic, to a vaccination clinic, they can call 211 and we can get them assistance with a ride. So we want to try to break down as many barriers to getting that vaccination as we can. The good news is we did top 53% of our eligible population is now fully vaccinated. 53.7 as of yesterday were fully vaccinated and 53.3% had received at least a first dose. I think with more Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines available, we're going to see those numbers. You know, for a long time it was fully vaccinated. We have higher numbers who had the first dose. But now with all of the vaccines being used, those are going to seem maybe a little stranger than they have been to us. Our zip code range, if you look at the map for our major zip codes, we range from 47.2% to 66.4% fully vaccinated. So again, I will just kind of challenge yet again that make your back, make your zip code the darkest blue you can and kind of win that right to brag about that a little bit. We do continue outreach clinics. Tomorrow, we will have a clinic at Henderson Court from 1:45 to 3:00 p.m. That will be Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. As we do more of these outreach clinics, we are mostly taking Johnson &amp; Johnson so that we can vaccinate individuals and they are done. They, two weeks later, they will be fully vaccinated. On Juneteenth, on Saturday, at the Juneteenth Celebration at Switchyard Park, we have a clinic there from 3:00 to 6:30, and again, that will be Johnson &amp; Johnson. So we're, we're happy. We continue to plan those. We're working with Mother Hubbard's Cupboard to, to go there in July and have a clinic. So we're just trying to look at all those opportunities that we have. Pfizer is available at IU. So again, if you are 12 to 18, you know, 12 to 17, and you need that Pfizer vaccine, IU Assembly Hall is the place that you want to go for that. We are also next Monday, starting Moderna Mondays at our Public Health Clinic on Miller Drive. That is the normal vaccine clinic, and it will be kind of funneled into normal vaccines. So you can use ourshot.in.gov to schedule that appointment, and that will help staff make sure that everything is running as smoothly as possible. It's a little bit smaller space, and again, they'll be seeing their normal clients as well. So Moderna Mondays starts on Monday. So you do have a variety of options in the community, and we continue to do our homebound program, as I mentioned, as well. One note, and I will kind of end with this. This is not directly COVID-related, but I want to bring it up because I know that you've kind of heard about our septic program and new installations, and that staff have been behind, you know, then I think we're, we're getting more caught up. But at first, we really kind of looked at, we know that we're in a pandemic. We know staff are being diverted to help with that. We had some staff retirements and new staff training and hiring and recruitment and all those kinds of things going on. We had our database crash and that's that, you know, and so that's what we initially kind of attributed it to. And certainly those things did contribute to that. But we did some number crunching, and I want to share this with you. So in 2019, new installations, I'm just talking new permits that were requested, we had 99. In 2020, we had 84, and this is just from January through April. So January through April, 2019, we had 99, 2020, we had 84. So a little bit of a drop. This year in 2021, from January through April, we had 154. So for anyone out there that wants to know why they having to wait a little longer to get staff out there to assess their field, all of that information, it is because the demand is high as well as the other things that I talked about early in the year that kind of created more problems for us. So staffing is, is in place, and those things are sort of settled. We've got the database, we can do those researches. But that does not include, when we talk about those 154, there were still complaints that came in, there were still failures to investigate. There's still record searches, people wanting information on their septic fields. All of those kinds of things continue. And it's just a good example of how even in a pandemic, the normal routine public health duties do continue. And so I know that there were some people who had complained to you and council about how long it was taking to get that done. And staff have been working extremely hard on that. But when we got those numbers, when we really crunched them, I wanted to share that with you.
That's amazing. That is just amazing. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Hi, I'm just astounded at the amount of building that's going on. And obviously, out in the county, not where, where sewers are available.
Yeah. Yeah, and people, I, you know, I'll take this opportunity to remind people to do their due diligence when they are looking at property about the size of the lot. If they're wanting to build and need to put a septic on it, it needs to be a size that will accommodate both the house they want to build and the septic system that they need to accommodate that house. And so look at the code, look at the requirements. Do your due diligence so that you're not in a position that you have a piece of property and you can't put in a system that is adequate for what you want.
Yeah, that's great advice. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I love the idea of Moderna Mondays. I've got to say that you're always on the messaging part of this.
That was not my idea. It was our nursing staff completely, but I, it just clicked. I loved it too.
Yeah, it's awesome.
And it's on Miller Drive. You've got all that going on.
The 3M, right?
Yeah, I love it. Great. Thank you, as always, for the update and the reminder. We are still in the pandemic, which is important to remember, very important to remember. Yep, thank you so much. Let's see what information Allison Moore has for us, Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am finally well and back in the office. I had taken off a couple of days due to some illness, but I am glad to be back, and thanks for having me this morning. I want to announce that we have blood drives scheduled in June, on June 28th and June 29th. We also have days on our website through August. So all of those drives and all the dates that we currently have on our website are going to be held at the Monroe County Convention Center, and they plan to have those drives for us through August. Starting in September, we'll be looking for a new location as the convention center is starting to open back up and things are starting to get booked there. We are forever grateful for all of those drives that they've had since last March at the convention center, and thank them so much for all that they did for us. So for now, we have June, July, and August drives. You're welcome to hop on to the co.monroe.in.us website and go to the Emergency Management page where you can find all of those dates for June, July, and August. And then you can hop over and schedule an appointment for the blood drive. We continue to be in the lead in the state of Indiana on the amount of blood that we are collecting at that drive. So we're hoping that as we shuffle things around and we find a new location in the fall, that we continue to have success, and we're trying to find that location that will be maybe similar to the location that we're currently at in hopes to continue to collect that amount of blood. So thanks to all those residents and all those individuals that have been able to make these drives so successful. Greatly appreciate that. I want to announce that starting Monday, June 21st through June 27th is Lightning Safety Week. So I encourage everyone to go to our website and check out. We've got lots of information. There's many, many statistics on lightning and ways to prevent lightning situations and just some helpful hints. And so since that starts on Monday, I do have some, some great ideas that I'm going to share with you next week during that week. But I encourage you between now and then to go to the county website, and of course, then to have plans in place and to be mindful of when weather is in those conditions and to be the most safe when lightning could potentially be in the area. And then lastly, I just want to give an update. Today it's 83. It's going to start getting a little bit warmer as the days go on. That humidity is probably going to check, step in on Friday. And then we have about a 50 to 60% chance of rain Saturday through Monday. So we've got that nice weather today and tomorrow, get a bit, a little bit warmer when, on Friday, and then some rain might potentially step in over the weekend. So that's what we've got coming, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Glad to have you back. Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Very true. I think you're probably a little worn out, which is understandable. Thank you for all the great information. We always appreciate it. Let's turn now to Lisa Ridge in the Highway Department. Good morning.
Good morning. So we've been paving, of course. Mount Gilead Road was done last week. Heinz Road was completed this week. We did some paper patching on Loudoun Road. We did have some complaints on Mount Gilead Road about when we close a road to pave. The reason for that is we do notify emergency services well in advance so that they know that the road is going to be closed on a certain day. But the reason for that is so paving company can come in and, and close the road and do it in one pass instead of both directions. This will eliminate having a seam down the middle of the road, which is where water will accumulate first, and that's where you first see your signs of cracking. So it's actually for the longevity of the roadway and the paving of that project. So we know it's an inconvenience to close a road, but again, we do notify emergency services and get the, get the proper notices out. But it is, it's, it's actually for the longevity of the paving to last. But other than that, we're, like I said, we're paving, patching, and doing the normal summer maintenance. And we're getting, coming to July already, so hard to believe.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time, or just that it's very nice to see the paving being done.
Yeah, for sure. Commissioner Giffens?
I just appreciate the fact that you're educating the public as to why the roads are closed. I think it makes a big difference in people's attitudes.
I think so too. It's hard to understand sometimes at the time and the inconvenience, but I think the guys do a great job of trying to solve those problems and trying to make it better. And it just might be a one-day inconvenience, but it'll make it last so much longer.
Yeah, it's a huge difference not having that seam down the middle of the roadway. And, and just a good reminder for everyone in the community to be careful when you're out about driving or if you see any signs, warnings about crews, mowing, anything, just please slow down and make sure everybody gets, gets home safe. Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. All right, and let's see if there's any other department heads who have a, an update for us today. I do not see any. So we will move on to the next item, which is public comment. This is for, an opportunity for the public to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. And the time limit is three minutes, just as it is for every, every item on our agenda as well. And when you get to 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. And that tone means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your, your last ideas, your final sentences before the three-minute mark. So with that, we have, appears to be at least one speaker, Mr. Askins, B Square Beacon. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Thanks. You might recall that I've been evangelizing recently on the topic of calendar feeds, and I've told you all about how the county's IT department has set up the county government's events with this beautiful calendar feed. That's exactly how it's supposed to be done. It lets me build this combined calendar for display so that people only have to look in one place to find all the government meetings here locally, county, city, school board, or whatever. So when I checked the combined calendar display early this week, I noticed that there's an unnamed holiday closing for this Friday, and it's coming from the Monroe County Official Government Calendar Feed. So when I went to check the resolution that the Commissioners approved on, I think it was November 4th last year to establish employee holidays, it's just a list of dates. And the list does include June 18th, but it doesn't say what any of the dates are for. So my guess is, especially in light of yesterday's US Senate action to, to pass a bill establishing Juneteenth as a national holiday, my best guess is that the Commissioners, maybe, I don't know if you anticipated that, that the US Senate was going to take that action back in November. But anyway, my assumption is that it's in honor of Juneteenth, that that's why Friday this week is a county employee holiday. So I'm just hoping to get confirmation or clarification on that question this morning. That's all I have. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Askins. Indeed, the county is celebrating Juneteenth. The county will be closed on Friday. We have some information to share about that at the end of the meeting, so stay tuned for those who are curious. And let's see if there's anyone else who has an item for public comment. I do not see any, so we will move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for June 9th, 2021.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
No.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for June 9th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, June 16th, 2021, and payroll, June 18th, 2021.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Miller, tell us all about it, please.
Good morning. I'd be glad to do so. I do want to note that the payroll date should reflect June 17th due to the holiday on Friday. I don't know if we need to adjust or modify anything. Okay, but the total for claims was $4,686,055.02. The majority of that was for June local income tax, commonly known as LIT distribution. The grand total of that LIT distribution was $3,979,642. Public safety LIT specifically accounted for $788,266.06 and public safety access points LIT accounted for $205,797.43 for our central dispatch. Again, that's for the month of June. As far as payroll, the total was $1,630,498.60. $1,153,103.23 was for the direct costs of payroll, and the remaining $477,395.37 were for indirect costs.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, that, no, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks for showing up and always making this so concise.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we appreciate seeing you every week for this vital information. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Simply click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. I do not see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of claims docket, accounts payable, June 16th, 2021, and payroll, June 17th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to new business, please.
Move approve A, a public hearing discussion on creating an infrastructure development zone, and B, approval of ordinance 2021-26 to create an infrastructure development zone.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing on the infrastructure development zone. And first, we will hear from Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, the infrastructure development zone is something that, that the Commissioners have done before. It is, and, and this one is, this ordinance is modeled after the previous one. The goal of the infrastructure development zone per state statute is to, is to promote infrastructure, including broadband infrastructure in areas that are lacking the, the necessary infrastructure for that. There are other components of that, but as the previous ordinance and this ordinance only applies to the broadband infrastructure. So what this does is it gives a tax, akin to a tax abatement for the infrastructure in those zones that helps reduce the, the long-term cost of providing broadband. If you notice from our ordinance that we have indicated that the, that the broadband would have at least a $39, I think, dollars per home, while increasing the value of the home by 3.1%. This area affects 839 homes. I would say that it's, at this point in time, it's, it's a little bit difficult to determine the value of a broadband to a home in monetary numbers. I think over the past year and a half with, with the school systems and everything, that there is a lot of value in broadband that isn't necessarily easy to put a dollar figure on. We got to this ordinance because by, we were discussing with Smithville kind of how to encourage broadband infrastructure in, in the areas of the county. At the last time we did this, we, we requested all providers to come in and discuss their future plans and what we can do to help, especially with the infrastructure development zone. We would still have that open invitation to all providers. I know in discussing with Smithville that we, with this project or this area in particular, it's kind of been off and on for probably the last year and a half or so due to the pandemic. And so I think it's appropriate to, to get this moving forward. I guess if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to, to answer them. I know Mr. Broden is on as a representative of Smithville to kind of maybe fill in some of the gaps.
Great. Let's, let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Broden first. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, my name is Dave Broden. I'm the Vice President of Field Operations for Smithville. So thank, I really appreciate you considering this ordinance. This project, which would bring fiber optic to 839 homes in southwest Monroe County, is going to dramatically increase their, their speeds and capacity. Our standard offering is gigabit internet or 1,000 megabits. So all the homes that are covered by this project would receive that. Obviously, building in rural areas is quite expensive, so, you know, we're looking to control costs wherever possible. I also wanted to mention that earlier this year, we created a partnership with UDWI, the Rural Electric Cooperative based in Bloomfield. And we're going to leverage some of their poles and their infrastructure to help control costs as well. And this is the first project that's part of that partnership. And so we're, we're really excited about that as well. And we anticipate this fiber project and fiber being available to all the homes within the next 12 to 18 months.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions first. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think the people who live in this area are going to be so pleased to hear this news. I know they've really had a hard time, especially during the pandemic, when not having, I can tell you, not having adequate service makes things extremely difficult.
Now, Commissioner Giffens?
I had my question answered. I wanted to know how quickly it would be rolled out. And so this is great. I, I do want to point out to the public that there is a five-year limit to this abatement. So if I understood what I read correctly.
I, I think that, and just to, there's a five-year limit on how long the, the group has to put the infrastructure in.
Okay.
So that's the five-year limit.
Okay, thank you.
And that makes sense. So is there, and this is all great news, and thank you for pursuing this. And I'm, I'm really delighted to hear about the work that you're doing with the Electrical Cooperative. That's huge, I think, especially in this part of the county. Is there any other information or updates you can provide on other areas for service and what your next plans are?
I'm sure. So one of the other partnerships we have, and I know that was part of the IDZ it was created before, was with SCI RMC. And I, this happened a little bit after the IDZ, but we're actually funding the builds that are in our territory in Monroe County. So a lot of the areas around Elletville and in the western side of the county, up to the county border. So we're actively building all those, and those are starting to come online as well. We just released, one project is completed and work on the next one. You know, I think that there's, there's remaining areas in southwest Monroe County that need attention. And, you know, I mean, we're committed to... And, you know, I mean, we're committed to improving our speeds in all of our service territory. That's also our service territory. So once this project's completed, or probably before it's completed, we're going to be discussing with UDWI where we want to go next. But I don't, we don't have anything specific yet.
But that's, but that's really good news, and that will be great for the folks in the southwestern part of the county, especially here, because they're struggling with just having DSL service or something that's very slow and very unreliable. So that's really going to be good news for folks in that part of the county. So thank you for that. That's good. All right, let's, since this is a public hearing, let's see if anyone has any comments or questions. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. I do not see any. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And Mr. Broden, thank you again for joining us. And Mr. Cockrell, thank you again for working on this. And if you would go ahead and call the roll on ordinance 2021-26, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Okay. Move to approve renewal of Indiana State Department of Health Immunization Grant. Fund name, immunization. Fund number, 8138-9622, in the amount of $60,008.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Cottle, good morning again.
Good morning again. This is a grant, as it said, a renewal. We've received this immunization grant for several years now. It is part of the Vaccine for Children program. So this in and of itself has nothing to do with the pandemic. This is our routine vaccination money. We use it in our, part of our partnership with IU Health. So this goes to the nursing and the vaccine program that we have at Miller Drive. And this is the same amount that we received in 2020. I think with the pandemic, the state kind of changed up the process this year and just renewed these for the same amount.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Has there been any drop-off on, in childhood immunizations and vaccinations that seem to be related to COVID?
There has. I don't have any specific numbers, but just even nationally, certainly with the stay-at-home orders and people being concerned about going into medical care, there's certainly people who are behind now on vaccinations. And our nurses have, you know, been encouraging and working with schools. Part of the other problem is we tend to do school clinics now, and then school was closed for a period of time. And so we couldn't do those as, you know, just because of the pandemic. So we are encouraging everybody to catch up on their vaccines now that it is approved and we can give COVID-19 vaccine with other vaccines. So if you're eligible for COVID-19 and you're going in for that vaccine and you are behind on something else, you may just get a vaccine in both arms, but we can go ahead and give both vaccines at the same time.
Excellent. That's great to know. That'd be great.
Well, and if you, as an adult, if you go in to get your COVID vaccine, you can take your little one in to get other things.
Exactly, exactly.
That's great. Very good. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. I do not see any raised hands. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the renewal of the Indiana State Department of Health Immunization Grant?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, and next item, please.
Move to approve an MOU agreement with IU Health Bloomington Positive Link. Fund name, lost to care. Fund number, 8183-9622, in the amount of $17,925.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Cottle, will you tell us about this one?
Certainly, a few weeks ago, you approved our grant agreement with the Indiana Department of Health. This is part of our sexually transmitted disease and our DIS grants. These funds came to us in a separate agreement, and they're new funds for us. But this will operate and work much like our agreement with IU Health for our public health nursing. This agreement will be with Positive Link for staff time so that their case managers can actually work directly with our DIS and sort of be a DIS in some, in some sense to make sure that people who may have been in care, they're HIV positive, they've been in care, they've kind of dropped out of care for some reason, and we can make sure that they maintain the care that they need, that they're getting medical care, they're not going because they lost insurance coverage, or whatever that might be. So that's what the lost to care stance is talking about. It's really just trying to make sure that people get the medical care that they need.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
That's a very descriptive fund name that it has.
Yes, it is.
This is, this is just, is wonderful. It's really nice to see that you're able to reach out to people like this who probably really need the help.
And, you know, this partnership, when we can leverage our community partnerships, this will prevent the health department, the DIS staff here, from contacting somebody when Positive Link is also trying to reach out to them. So, you know, it streamlines things, it's more efficient, and it's, you know, maybe less hassle for the individual because it's one person contacting them.
Yeah, it makes so much sense. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, it's just one more thing that the health department oversees, in addition to all the septic systems that they're taking care of. But also, you know, I think, I don't want to, I'll speak just for myself, but we all wish that something similar were in place for so many other parts of our healthcare system in the United States.
Absolutely.
No, that's, that's a great point. Yeah, excellent. And you answered my question about what's that fund name? So thank you for solving that mystery. All right, excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand. See the link at the bottom of the screen on Zoom. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the MOU agreement with IU Health Bloomington Positive Link?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Appreciate you. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve Dossier Consulting Services LLC Agreement. Fund name, county 4D incentive, F93.563. Fund number, 8895, in the amount of $27,600.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory from the Auditor's Office, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. So this is just kind of a housekeeping item. We've been using Dossier Consulting for years now to assist with our our annual cost allocation plan. So the cost allocation plan just assists with obtaining the indirect costs associated with our 4D child support program. So things, you know, that aren't directly related, like the cost of, you know, the Auditor's Office processing claims, for example, electricity, that sort of thing. So we are able to, you know, work with Dossier Consulting to put together this plan and actually get some of those costs back that are associated with this program. So it's a really great program. You know, the cost compared to the, the cost of the program compared to what we actually recover is enormous there, as you can see. In the 2019 report for use in 2021, we recovered $230,568.22, while, you know, this program costs about $9,000 a year. The fee went up slightly, I think, by $200 a year. So just, you know, the raise in price there. But yeah, great program, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Anytime money comes back to us, it's always good news.
Yes.
That is good news. Commissioner Giffens?
No, just thanks for making sure things like this are in place.
So this is a three-year program?
It is. I believe that there's a bit of a discount, you know, just for, which we always like a good discount. But there's a discount if we pay, you know, if we sign up for the three years, for the three-year contract. Otherwise, we can go year to year, and the price slightly increases, so.
But it's something we know we're going to need, so.
Absolutely. So it makes sense, in my opinion, to go ahead and, you know, take care of the three-year contract.
Excellent, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any, there are any comments or questions from the public? Just use the raise hand feature on the Zoom screen to let us know you wish to speak and offer comments. I do not see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve Dossier Consulting Services LLC agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you again, Ms. Gregory. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great day.
You too. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-26, highway surplus property.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we will tell us all about it, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, the Highway Department has five filing cabinets and one 1996 Vermeer chipper that they want to get rid of. I did, I did notice that the exhibits, the Exhibit A was not attached as part of the packet, but that's simply our internal forms that we have to get signed off by the department head, maintenance, and the Auditor's Office when we dispose properties. I think you've seen, all seen those before. I do believe that the the chipper is the reason that all these items are over $5,000 in total. I think they, they think that's valued at over 5,000 just in itself. So we may get a little bit of money back, but again, all these will be sold at a public bidding.
Great. Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I imagine the chipper is scrap value at this point.
You never know. Excellent. Great, thank you so much. And let's see if there are any comments or questions from the public. Please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-26?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, thank you so much.
I think that should be Resolution 2021-27. I think we just did.
I think it's actually 29 if it's, if it's what I'm looking at on my screen.
Oh, sorry. I didn't catch that earlier.
Hold on. Hold on. I usually go through when I'm reading the packets and match those things up.
Yeah. It, on the packet, it says 2021-29.
Nine, yeah, I missed that. Um, do we need to have the definitive?
I think that it's in the packet correctly. The substance does not change through the number, and that number is just assigned by the Auditor's Office.
Okay.
I think acknowledging it in the, in the minutes is sufficient.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So it is Resolution 2021-29. Got it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Giffens, for spotting that. Excellent, all right. Um, with that, we don't have, um, let's see. We don't have any appointments today. We do have some announcements. And we'll start with our Juneteenth information.
We, we all know from history classes that the Emancipation Proclamation, which officially outlawed slavery in all the Confederate states, became effective on January 1st in 1863. Enforcement of the proclamation, however, generally relied on the advancement of Union troops, meaning far too many people remained in slavery after that date. Despite the surrender of General Robert E. Lee on April 9th, 1865, which effectively ended the Civil War, it wasn't until June 19th, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, that the Emancipation Proclamation was enforced in that state. At that time, it is estimated that there were as many as 250,000 enslaved people just in Texas.
First commemoration of June 19th is a significant date, occurred in Texas one year later, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day. The celebration of what we now call Juneteenth gradually spread through across the South. It wasn't until the 1970s, however, that it became nationally recognized. Today's Juneteenth is celebrated in 47 states, the District of Columbia, and beyond. And we, the Monroe County Commissioners, are proud to join in observing Juneteenth.
Yeah, and it's important to look at the history of this event and to consider the words of Union General Gordon Granger in 1865 in Galveston. He said this, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." This includes, this involves an absolute equality of personal rights and the rights of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor. As Mr. Askins noted earlier, the US Senate has passed a resolution to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. That would be a wonderful thing for our entire country. But as we celebrate Juneteenth this Saturday, we all acknowledge that there is a great deal of work that still has to be done to ensure equality and liberty for everyone in our community and across this country. So we ask residents of Monroe County to join our commitment to doing that work. So there is a Juneteenth holiday on Friday at Monroe County Government. All of our buildings will be closed, and I think Commissioner Giffens is going to go ahead and put some information about Juneteenth into the chat for us, if you would.
Already done?
Oh, well, never mind. And I also have a couple of other quick announcements, just a reminder for residents of the community who may have received information in the mail from the city of Bloomington that you're being targeted for annexation. We have provided information right on our homepage at co.munro.in.us. It's important to be informed on this important and, and very consequential event for residents of Monroe County. Also, at the, we're mid-June already, and the Township Assistance Program ends at the end of June. And so if you are struggling to pay for basic necessities, including things like rent and utilities, please contact your township trustee as soon as possible for assistance. They have access to a number of resources, including our Township Assistance Fund, which we are proud to provide to our township trustees, along with the Monroe County Council. And we're grateful for their assistance, and we are we're at $125,000 in that fund. So if you do need assistance, contact your trustee. Every resident of the county, no matter where you live, lives in a township. And you can find the list at co.munro.in.us to contact your trustee. Go to the emergency management page, or it is part of our packet every week, thanks to Ms. Freeman's thoughtfulness of putting that contact list in our minutes. So please, please reach out for help if you need it. We know that COVID has had a huge impact on so many members of our community. Let's see if my colleagues have anything else they wish to add.
No, I don't.
I'd like to congratulate Monroe County Habitat for Humanity on the groundbreaking at Osage Place. This is a 12 and a half acre plot of land, and the county provided 4.2 acres of that, where 69 new homes will eventually occur. And I want to thank Commissioners Thomas and Jones for, and several of our predecessors for making all this possible. It's an incredible thing to happen in our community.
Yeah, it's absolutely great news. It was a, it was a fun event, and hopefully we'll get some pictures posted soon on our Facebook. Great. All right. If there is nothing else, what time should we come back, Commissioner Jones, for our work session?
I, it doesn't matter as much to me today as it usually does.
Okay, so how about 11:00 AM? We'll come back for our work sessions. So it's about eight minutes from now. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Get vaccinated.